Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 7th, 2016. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber, and we'd like to begin today's meeting with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, good afternoon, excuse me, but thank you once again for allowing me to come forward and present the Mayor's Award of Excellence. This one is for the month of January, and it is being presented to a police officer, a police officer by the name of Christopher V. Hill, and he's from the Operations Division of the Police Department, nominated in the category of productivity by Police Officer Luke Bonkowitz for outstanding behavior, activity as a patrol officer in the year 2014. The Police Department tracks virtually every patrol officer's activity, making it possible to compare the performance of Officer V. Hill to the average officer. Here is how he compared in 2014. He generated 386 traffic warnings compared to an average of 224. He issued 354 traffic citations compared to an average of 201. He served 71 warrants compared to an average of 26, and he generated 333 misdemeanors and 56 felonies compared to an average of 111 misdemeanors and 13 felonies. By generating it, it doesn't mean he committed them, it means he processed, initiated and processed those events. In general, Officer V. Hill wrote more warnings and citations than 90 percent of LPD officers, and his warrants, misdemeanors, and felonies all ranked in the top four among LPD officers. The felony numbers especially impressive, tallied the most felonies by a single officer unit in the last 20 years, and prosecutors were able to file on 90 percent of the felony charges, a good indication by police standards of his diligent, meticulous police work. Bonkowitz says the numbers demonstrate his self-initiated activities and his efforts substantially improved the quality of life for the residents in his team's area. The majority of his arrests involved narcotics possession and trafficking. He completed 92 narcotics investigations in 2014, or about two per week. His narcotics investigations resulted from field contacts, traffic stops, and most importantly, collaboration between Officer V. Hill and concerned citizens. Sounds to me like another police officer working the community policing system in a most intelligent fashion. Bonkowitz said his work is a great example of policing in partnership with the public, one of the hallmarks of LPD. His work with citizen community groups and other LPD units led to the elimination of many narcotics houses, the seizure of a wide variety and considerable quantity of controlled substances, and many arrests of suspected drug traffickers. So it's my pleasure to present this afternoon the Mayor's Award of Excellence to Christopher V. Hill. Please join me in congratulating him.
Would you like to say something? I think you should.
Sure.
Introduce your wife.
My lovely wife, Rachel. Great help and great support for me. I'm honored to receive this award. Quite simply, I couldn't have done it without great team members and great employees and assistants from LPD. Everybody I work with is great, and truly, they're the backbone, and they're the people who really should be receiving awards on a daily basis. They're the ones that work hard, and I'm just happy, in this case, that I was lucky enough to receive one today, but really, everyone is award-worthy there, so just want to thank everybody I work with there. They're the real heroes.
I think Brian Jackson will want to say a word to 2002.
Well, Jackson's coming forward. What district do you primarily monitor?
I currently work in the Southwest District, and in 2014, I also worked in the Southwest District, so.
We had one of your colleagues from the Northeast a few months ago, I believe, who was, I don't know if he achieved what you did, but we warned everyone in Northeast Lincoln to be careful. Now we're warned Southwest, so beware.
Fair enough.
Be correct. Thank you. Sorry, Brian.
Brian Jackson, I am your interim Chief of Police. I've had the honor to have Officer V. Hill work for me while I'm in the, while we were in the narcotics unit together. Very impressed with you then, very impressed with you now. I'd like to say your activity is unique, but we have a fantastic police department. The future is very bright for the Lincoln Police Department, a great staff. What you've demonstrated is a fantastic work ethic. During this time, it should be noted, he was also going for his master's degree, going to school at the same time, so he's burning candles at any number of ends, and you can thank his teammates for calling his wife to notify her that he was receiving his award. He's so humble a person that he failed to mention that to his wife to be here, but his teammates watched his back on that and made sure she was called and was present here for this, for this honor. But, again, appreciate your work, your effort. It is, it is a work with team, not only your officers, but the community itself, and I think our officers know that and do it very well, and you're a great representation of that.
Thank you, sir.
Great job. Appreciate it.
Give the rest of his team a chance to exit the chambers, and we'll get started with the City Council Meeting in just a moment. All right. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under Public Hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on an item should just come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating his or her name, address, and whether or not he or she is speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a reminder, there will be a timer that sounds after four minutes. And after all the public hearings have concluded, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, first, those giving testimony are asked to come forward and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Under Public Hearing Consent Agenda, we have items one through nine.
Motion to approve?
If no one wishes to speak, we can vote on these items. Item one was introduced by Raybold. Someone would move that.
I'll move on her behalf.
Thank you.
Second.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Items three through seven were introduced by Camp.
I'll move.
Second.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next, then, are Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 10 and 11. They are the application of Fairfield Inn and Suites for a Class I liquor license at 8455 Andromat Drive, and the related manager application of John Klimpel. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
John Klimpel, 5930 South 114th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68526.
Welcome, Mr. Klimpel. Why don't you tell us about your application today?
Well, we're just going to open up a new Fairfield there at 84th and Highway 2 on Wednesday, and like all the hotels, it seems like nowadays, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is the time people would like to have a free drink, a guest, and basically, we do it from between 5:00 and 8:00 o'clock, and it's strictly for registered guests. We do cardon, we go through all the training. I've been doing the liquor in Lincoln for over 20 years, so I'm the manager and the management company for the hotel, for the hotel.
Okay. Any questions from council? Carl?
Is there a bar in the hotel, or is this just?
No, no, we strictly beer and wine, and we bring it out. It's locked up, and we bring it out just for those hours.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Clerk, can you call the next item?
If not, I'll call items 12 and 13. Application of Rachel Rice Mattson, doing business as Top Hat Tavern, for Class I liquor license at 736 West Corn Husker Highway, as well as her manager application. Oh, you're fine. Could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Madam President, members, Mike Kelly appearing here with the, with the proposed applicant, Rachel Rice. We're here basically just for one simple reason. She and her husband are buying this property. He had a, he's ineligible for legal reason, but he, so he signed a spousal affidavit. He is, unlike me, he's handy, he knows what he's doing, he has the heating and air conditioning business, so he's actually useful to be around a place, so they would like to be able to use him. They're gonna also, we'll ask for a hearing in front of the commission to make sure then, so that if he's there, you know why he's there. He's not, he tends to be no part of the business.
Thank you.
And Rachel's here for any questions you might have for her as well.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Cindy.
Thank you. Okay, so I saw in the application, or on the letter that we received, that you were scheduled to take your class February 11th. Did you in fact take that class?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Teresa, would you please call the next item?
Yes, the next one would be item 14 and 15. Application of Shopko 172 for a Class B liquor license at 3400 North 27th Street, and the related manager application of James Larson.
James Larson.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, James.
James Larson, 17212 U Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Welcome, Mr. Larson. Can you tell us a little bit about your application today?
Yeah, we're just in support of adding a beer license to another one of our Shopko stores.
Any questions from council? Yes, John?
Yes, Mr. Larson, you're from Omaha. Do you manage a number then of the Shopkos?
Right. I'm the Nebraska agent for the alcohol, and I have about 30 different locations throughout Nebraska that I'm the contact for. The store manager will be ordering, or displaying, and purchasing, and so on, but the state of Nebraska would prefer to have one contact, so I'm that individual.
Great. Go ahead, Carl.
Yes, how many of your stores, those 30 stores, have alcohol?
Shopko has two divisions. We have the big boxes, which are in Lincoln and Omaha, and right now, we are just starting to get beer into the big boxes. The majority of the Shopko stores that carried our hometown stores, which were their former Pomitis, and we carried their beer alcohol for 10, 12 years. When we merged in 2012, Shopko Big Boxes liked the numbers that the, that was coming out of the beer and alcohol business, so the big boxes are starting to get into that business as well. Just started, I believe, this year. I think Grand Island might be our first one, and then we've got a store in Omaha, and then 47, and in Lincoln is just getting ready to get that license as well.
Any further questions? We'll keep you right here, because I believe the next item involves you as well.
I'll call items 16 and 17. Application of Shopko 39 for a Class B liquor license at 4200 South 27th Street, as well as the manager application of James Larson.
You're already sworn in. Okay. Do we have some questions from council of Mr. Larson? Not on this? Okay, well, we'd like to have some staff questions on this, if Mr. Schaefer or David Carey would like to come forward, or Tanya. Sorry, I didn't see you here.
David Carey with the City County Planning Department.
Tanya Peters, Assistant City Attorney for City of Lincoln.
Okay, Tanya, you alerted the council to an issue surrounding this application. Can you share that information with the public, and David's here to also provide information as well?
The zoning district for this particular application is, I believe, a B1 zoning district, which would require a special permit. It also requires a 100-foot buffer from a residential district. Because of the neighboring zoning, I would say to the north and to the east, they're, they are not outside that, that 100-foot from the residential neighborhood. Is that correct, David?
I think it's mainly to the east.
To the east is no real issue. I looked at that area to the north, but when I was looking at this, I thought it was possible that they may be able to come back and ask for a change of zone, the property owner. It may be possible to, to only use, change a portion of this property, the zoning for a portion of it, and maybe not change that northern half, but that's something really that planning would have to look at and see if it's feasible for this property to be changed. We did something similar to this, or something similar to this occurred where the Zari's went in, that they were not in the proper zoning, and they changed to a B2 zoning, and they are much closer to a residential than this particular property. We have a pretty significant easement or property through there with a bike trail the City of Lincoln owns that gives it a pretty big buffer, where a lot of these that we see where they're prohibited because of the 100-foot, they're just right on top of each other, and that's not really what we have in this case.
Right.
So, this rule about B1 needing a special permit and B2 not, where does that originate?
That's in Chapter 27.63.680 of the zoning code, and B1, B3, H1, H2, H3, H4, I1, I2, and I3 all require a special permit.
Why, is there any history you can give us behind that? When did this take place? Why are we having different requirements for different zones? A 100-foot in some places is strict, and a 100-foot in some other places isn't, and we can offer special permits in some, but not in others?
Then, yes, we can do that. I mean, that's the way the code is set up. As far as the history is concerned, we certainly could provide you a lot of information on when that occurred, when, I don't have that immediately to my disposal right now, but the main purpose of this is, in a large extent, especially in the B1 areas, to have some separation from residential areas to those locations that are selling alcohol. So, on a basic level, that separation, there's an intent there for what is intended to be a greater good to the community in that neighborhood. So, in a base, that's a basic answer. We can provide you a lot more background information.
I happen to know the answer. And the answer is, this came from years ago, before businesses like this were able to sell alcohol, and the only places you could buy alcohol off-sale were in liquor stores in Lincoln, and this zoning kind of thing is in place because of those liquor stores trying to protect their turf, and it's no longer an issue in this city, as far as I can tell. So I think maybe we should look at changing the ordinance, because it seems to be burdensome and not relevant to what's going on in our community today.
Well, as far as for this applicant for today, we have, we have to make some decisions about how we can help the applicant, and you had said that there might be two options, I mean, that we, that we have before us.
Sure.
Can you explain what those options are?
And this will, you know, if, if the zoning does change ordinance, or if they do a change of zone, I, I figured you could approve it with the requirement that they obtain a special permit, or basically meet the zoning requirements. This would allow the application to go on to the Nebraska Liquor Commission. It will just sit there until they can show that they properly meet the zoning. What that does for the applicant is, they don't have to pay an applicant fee again, they don't have to come back before the City Council, if that's your only issue with this application, and it gives them a period of time to kind of work something out, and those applications can sit out there for a while. We've had some other ones where they've applied way before they've ever built their building. I don't know how long the Liquor Commission will let it sit out there before they say you have to do another one, but they'll give them a reasonable period of time to work through this issue if, if they want to go down that road. The second option would be to do a denial, because it doesn't meet the zoning, or if there's any other issues that you identify. What that doesn't prevent them from applying again, it, they would just have to apply, do the application fee again, fill out the application, come back before council, which is okay too, it's just an extra cost on the applicant. So I give you both of those options. We've done them both ways, just depending on maybe, sometimes, we've told the applicant that you need to go get a special permit before, and then they never apply, and so sometimes council is denying it, knowing that they're not gonna go apply for a special permit, so.
Cindy.
Thank you. Dave, I have a couple of questions, because I'm kind of familiar with this area, but it's been a very long time ago. There used to be a restaurant down in this very area called Jack's, I think. It was a steakhouse, and they served alcohol there. Do you remember that location?
I'm not familiar with that location.
Okay. So, would you be able to find us information on whether in fact they had a waiver, or how they were able to have alcohol there?
Sure, we can certainly do the background informa, check on that, as far as what was there in the past.
Okay. And then also, is there still a grocery store there? I think there's still a grocery store there.
There's not a grocery store, there's a hardware store, Valentinos, and there is a restaurant on the north side where Jack's used to be. I think it's a sushi place now. If, if I remember right, I had this discussion with Brian Will, I was thinking that they were two separate parcels, and that northern parcel is actually more than 100 feet away from the residential, but I could be wrong on that. But you are right, Jack's was there before.
I think it's very, we'll check it, but I think it's very possible that that 100-foot separation was, was able to be met at that point.
Okay, and do you know?
I think, sorry, I think there's another point, Officer Schaefer just whispered in my ear, that prior, something that was there, located there prior to 1994, was likely grandfathered in at that point.
Oh, I see. Do you know if, I think it was an IGA store maybe that used to be there? Do you know if they had a permit to sell alcohol there?
I can't answer that question right now, but I can try to find that out.
Was that where Shopko was, or somewhere else?
No, it's, it's north of Shopko, where the, where the hardware store is now, was an IGA store.
Okay, planning can look at that and see if that's an issue, and if, if it's something where there's a mistake in our records and they would qualify for a special permit, we can process, we can get them processed and, and get that if you approve it with that condition on there, so.
Thank you.
Done.
Ms. Peters, could, refresh my memory, what the application fee is?
I think the application fee is around $400, and then they would pay their license fee once they get approved, and that obviously is a little bit more than that, but, but yeah, the 400 is non-refundable.
And what would you estimate to be the outside timeframe to get the proper ducks in order, if we were to go ahead and approve a subject to completion of that?
I haven't worked with planning enough to say in the last six years, so I'll let David answer.
I think a good rule of thumb on a change of zone, which is what would be involved in this case, would be about a two-month period, as far as when you, you get the application in, going to Planning Commission, then getting it to City Council.
Do you have any concerns about this particular situation?
I don't have any overarching concerns, other than I think we need to talk with, in this case, it'd be our Parks Department, because it's a trail that they maintain that would be involved in the change of zone for the property. It has the, the local neighborhood zoning attached to it now. It likely would go to a P zoning, is my initial take on it, but we'd certainly want to coordinate with them and make sure we're understanding what those implications are, if there are any.
I wondered about the P zone, and I didn't put that, I don't think I put that in the email. I didn't know if we had zoned any of our other trails P, so that was something I thought planning could look at, so.
Okay, so, David, if, just so that everyone understands, if, if we were to approve this subject to it going through the process of seeking a change of zone, can you explain, you know, that that is not a given? We, we can't promise that that happened, but we certainly have that public process available to the applicant.
Absolutely.
Okay. Also, in terms of the larger, broader policy implications, can you speak to, to, you know, where is the issue of potentially changing policy? Is your understanding that, that that policy is of no current value to anyone in the city, or do you have something to say about that?
I think there probably would be varied opinions on that, to be honest. I think there would be some people that would think it, it does serve a very important purpose. I think there'd be others that would want to say that it's, it's not serving as much of a purpose anymore. The, what I would say, though, is that I think what we'd want to look at is what would be the impact of changing the policy and the zoning, so that we know what locations are going to be impacted by that, and what neighborhoods might have more of an interest on a change like that, or others that have less of an interest.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item?
If no one else wanted to speak, I'd like to ask Mr. Larson a question. From, from your standpoint in that of Shopkos, do you have a preference of what action we might take?
I guess I would prefer we approve it, and then we would have our folks go through the necessary steps to change or get the permissions that we need to.
And you'd pledge to see that that would happen?
Absolutely. Jessica Waltski is our contact, and we'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Teresa, do you want to call the next item?
Sure. The item 18, manager application of Roger Addison for Fresh Time Farmers Market at 5220 O Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roger Addison, 8150 Haskell Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124.
Welcome. You want to tell us a little bit about why you're here today?
Seeking a alcohol permit for my grocery store. Farmers Market is all, all organic, excuse me, non-GMO, you know, all those cool buzzwords that we like to use in healthy living these days. We've been open for about a month and happy to be here, here in Lincoln.
Any questions? Go ahead, Cindy.
Actually, comment. The, I was there for the grand opening, the grocery store, the parking lot is packed all the time. You are doing a great business, and I understand that you're going to be a great community partner here for Lincoln. I don't know if council knows this, but Fresh Time has a reputation for doing brats for a buck in the summer in their locations, where they contribute, all proceeds, they contribute the brats, and then all proceeds are given to local, community, nonprofit organizations, and they also, as I understand it, donate their produce. They've already made arrangements long before they were in town to donate their produce to the Food Bank and the local mission, and so very, very pleased to have them in the northeast part of.
We actually do Deli Bakery, anything that's, that they'll take. We're hooked up with Food Net and Food Bank, and Ponca Drive actually comes and picks up too, so.
And about 100 employees, all right?
Uh, yeah, we're actually still hiring, so, sorry, anybody's looking for a job. Still actively hiring, sorry.
So when are you moving to Lincoln?
Uh.
You don't have to answer that.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. I plead the fifth.
Any further questions? Go ahead, John.
With it, do you oversee several facilities and?
Uh, no, I'm actually just the assistant store director here in Lincoln. Hopefully, maybe Omaha someday as a store director, but I guess we'll see.
Is this the first Nebraska store?
Yes, first Nebraska store for this Westis Company goes. Store number 30 within the company, but we're, we're growing fast and quick, and.
I ran into you in Indianapolis last Thanksgiving, I was surprised I had not heard of it, just a really great facility. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Teresa, could you please call the next item?
If not, I'll call item 20. Application of McKinney's Irish Pub for a special designated license to cover.
I think we need to call 19.
I'm sorry. Yes, item 19. Application of Courtside Banquet Hall for a change of location of their existing Class I liquor license at 710 Hill Street, 2333 Speedway Circle Number 2.
And that's okay, Teresa, I'm 19 and 20.
Do you raise your right hand, Joel? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Welcome. Can you please tell us about Bison Courtside, and why you're before us today?
In August of last year, Lincoln Public Schools purchased the Bison Youth Sports Complex, which is located 710 Hill Street. We did banquets there, is the Courtside Banquet Hall, and after they purchased the building, we got a new building, and it's right across the street, basically on the other side of Van Dorn, behind Good Life Fitness, near the new Sporting Village area.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing done, Teresa, would you please call the next item?
Now I'll call 20.
I'll stay.
Thank you.
Application of McKinney's Irish Pub for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately thirty feet by seventy feet at one-fifty-one North Eighth Street, number one-forty, on March seventeenth, from eight AM to one AM.
Uh, similar to last year, we did the Saint Patrick's Day Festival, um, and, uh, we'd like to do it again. It was a fairly successful event. I think the community really enjoyed it and, uh, and it just, you know, brings more to, uh, to our community doing events like this.
Any questions? Can you tell us a little bit more about how it worked last year? We have another, uh, applicant here today who will be across the street same night, making Saint Patrick's Day that much more fun. So, let us know how it went last year.
It's, it's, it went well. I mean, we had a large turnout. We had, uh, little games that we did, like a Lucky Charms eating contest, potato peeling contest. Um, and we had, uh, the inside part of the pub as well for, uh, um, just atmosphere, fun situations, fun area to, to be in on Saint Patrick's Day.
Are you making any changes to this year's event based on last year's experience? Okay.
Exact same thing.
Okay.
The, and the logistics are set up the same way, so that you, you're on the south side?
We are on the south side of the street, yep. The logistics are basically the exact same. I know, uh, McFarland space is just a little bit larger this year than it was last year, but for the most part, it's gonna be the exact same setup. We had the, uh, event team meeting and went through the entire layout and it's very similar to last year's layout and setup.
And I noticed your hours are eight AM to one AM.
Yes, we, we have some setup that we have to do, um, we actually probably won't have any people out there. Now that is the, uh, opening, uh, round of the NCA tournament that, that Thursday, Saint Patrick's Day is. So it could be a little busier than we anticipated, probably busier than it was last year, early in the day. Because a lot of people take that day off and go watch basketball. Um, so, but I, I really don't anticipate people being outside at the event, uh, until around two-ish. Uh, but we're, we will be doing some setup, so we're ready for them by the time people may take off work early and, uh, and come out for the festivities.
And, and the one AM closing time, you, you can close inside at two.
Correct, and last year we actually, it depends, I have been watching the extended forecast very diligently to, hopefully it's a, a nice day. Last year, we had a high of about sixty-three and later in the day it got a little chilly. And we were probably all inside, you know, the outside part kinda probably died down eleven-thirty-ish and people started to go inside because it started to get chilly. I mean, it was down in the thirties, uh, later at night and so, um, I do one o'clock just in case it's, uh, going well. But my, my guess is, most everything would probably be moved inside by midnight-ish.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, John?
Yes, uh, out of curiosity, because that ends up blocking P Street there for the day.
It does.
And with the traffic, and that's kind of a pattern that comes up going, uh, east on P Street. What have you worked out with the city, uh?
We will have, uh, the lighted sign, uh, three days in advance, letting people know that, uh, P Street will be closed on the seventeenth, so there will be, uh, notification to people that drive there regularly that, uh, P Street will be closed. And then there is a walkway between our two facilities where people can still walk down, uh, P Street. They don't have to go down and around to, uh, queue. They can still get down P Street going from one side to the other.
So that'll be in the middle of P Street?
In the middle, in the middle of P Street, yeah. And we will have, uh, security people at both entrances, and I know McFarland's well too, directing people that aren't necessarily coming to the, uh, festivities on how to get through.
Now, will that take all of the parking from Eighth Street going west?
That, yes, the, we, when we filled out our application for, to hit the meters, we took the entire block of meters and, and there will be barricades on both ends at Seventh and P and Eighth and P, so you can't even drive down it.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Tr- anyone else wish to testify on this item? Okay, Theresa, could you please call item twenty-one?
Yes, application of McFarland and Sons Pub for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately thirty feet by one hundred feet at seven-ten P Street on March seventeenth, from noon to two AM. No oath on S D Ls.
Okay.
Welcome. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your Saint Patrick's Day event?
Uh, well, very similar to what Joel just explained, um, doing our Saint Patrick's Day event again this year, um, hoping to. Um, it was a great time last year, we invite everybody out, just excited to do it again, so.
Could you give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Stacy Cole, uh, fifteen-fifty South Cottington Avenue, Lincoln.
Questions for Ms. Cole? Carl.
Yes, um, similarly, I see on your application that, that you have a two AM closing time.
We do.
Um, could we negotiate?
Well, the inside of the bar closes at two. Our outside area where we'll have the live bands, that will close down at midnight, so we'll move everybody indoor like we did last year.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Okay, any further questions? Did you have?
I guess I'm, if you're closing down at midnight, but you asked for two, do we want any clarification when the voting session comes?
I think that allows for them to remove the alcohol from the space.
But conceivably you could, or legally you could go to two outside if you wanted, if we have that two PM.
We're not planning on doing that, our bands will be done at midnight, so.
Okay.
Just move everybody indoors.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay.
Madam Chair, I would move for approval of items four through twenty-one, I'm sorry, not.
Ten.
Ten through twenty-one?
Thank you, I got the wrong page there, yes, ten through twenty-one.
And do we wanna make, um, those conditional on Shopko?
That's true. Should we take them on separate?
On Shopko, I believe the resolution does have the condition in there.
My alert calling then, well, why don't we approve all of them except, uh, sixteen and seventeen?
We have a motion to approve items ten through fifteen and items eighteen through twenty-one, do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Camp, seconded by Christensen. Uh, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And now I would, thank you for your input there, I'd move that items, uh, fifteen and sixteen be approved with the condition of, that they have to.
Sixteen and seventeen? Items sixteen and seventeen, John? Sorry, they're both for Shopko, so the, the story in question is the south.
The twenty-seventh, yes, twenty, yes, thank you, sixteen, seventeen.
Second.
Moved by Camp, seconded by Christensen, um, discussion? I would just add that we certainly want to be good partners with, uh, our businesses and we hope that they can find resolution. We of course are not able to, um, approve this completely and move it on to the state without further review in the, um, in the planning process. But we have a real, resolution that will allow them to, to seek that, uh, permit that they, they need in order to move forward. Yes, Cindy.
Um, I also am hoping that the Planning Commission will look back on that Jack's and on the, um, grocery store that was there to see if they had what process, um, that they had, if they in fact, I know Jack's sold liquor, I don't know if, um, the grocery store did, but just to make sure that if there's an easy way to get these folks, uh, permitted or waived, that we can do that.
Theresa, we call the roll, please?
Sure. Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Extend public hearing resolutions, approving Two Loon Ventures LLC doing business as Thirsty Sports Bar as a Keno satellite at three-seventeen South Eleventh Street.
Members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey, I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at one-one-two forty-eight John Galt Boulevard in Omaha, Nebraska. I have with me today Jason, he's the owner of Thirsty's and we're here to seek approval for the Keno application they have before you.
Any questions of the applicant? Yes, Carl.
Thirsty's, uh, tell us about Thirsty's. This is a new, a new bar?
Yeah, we've been open for right around four weeks now.
Okay.
And we've considered a soft opening, but we've, uh, just a little sports bar.
Okay, what's your capacity?
Uh, we just got our capacity back, it was ninety-nine people, actually.
Okay.
It's about a two thousand square foot area. We have a pool table, shuffleboard, so shuffleboard's been a big hit in Milwaukee, I guess, because there really isn't any, there isn't another one downtown, so. Been getting a lot of use.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay.
If not, we can go on to public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item twenty-three, text amendment one-six-zero-zero-one, amending chapter twenty-seven point fifty-nine of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to airport zoning regulations. To extend the approach zone from three miles to a new limit of ten miles. Establish the area included within the airport hazard area. Revise existing definitions and add new definitions and other changes to be in accordance with the passage of Nebraska Legislative Bill one-forty. And repealing said sections.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Bill Austin, I'm an attorney with the Baylor Evanon Law Firm, twelve forty-eight O Street, Suite six-hundred, Lincoln, Nebraska. Uh, appearing today with me is Mr. John Large, he is the Deputy Director for Engineering at the, uh, Lincoln Airport. Uh, and we are here today to, uh, be in support of and to explain as necessary the, uh, the item that's in front of you. And, uh, with that, John is the one who really knows what we're doing, so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
What we're trying to do today is two things, uh, with this text amendment. One is to expand the zoning protections, the approach protections that we have at the Lincoln Airport. And the second is to bring local zoning, um, codes into, into compliance with state law. Uh, we have had zoning protection around the Lincoln Airport since at least nineteen sixty-five by ordinance. And this map is reflective of what we have, uh, today. Uh, we zone nominally a three-mile radius around the Lincoln Airport with a number of different zones within that three miles. Close to the runways, we have an operation zone, uh, in the center. Uh, that is a zone that is just a little long, two hundred feet on each end, longer than the runway, it's a thousand feet wide. Uh, the maps, maximum height of a structure there would be zero, would be the same as the runway elevation. Uh, we have some transition zones to the side, the pink areas. Uh, those start at the edge of the operation zone, go up at a seven-to-one slope. Uh, those are, those go on that slope nominally, uh, for, to a hundred and fifty feet above the runway elevation. Uh, at that point, they turn into a turning zone, which is the big yellow areas that you see. Uh, we maintain that hundred and fifty feet throughout all those turning zones. The most important areas to us are the approach zones. Uh, that would be the green area that you see off the end of each one of the six runways. Uh, we start at the runway end elevation there. Uh, that slope, that, that trapezoidal plane increases in elevation one foot for every fifty feet horizontally that we go away from the runway end. We do that for seventy-five hundred feet until we're a hundred and fifty feet above the runway elevation. Uh, then in an outer approach zone, we maintain that hundred and fifty feet all the way out to the three-mile limit. In two thousand and thirteen, uh, the state passed L B one-forty, which allowed for or required, uh, that zoning boards atop, adopt expanded zoning, extending that approach zone out to ten miles from the runway end. This is reflective of what that new zoning map would look like. Uh, with the new zoning, uh, we maintain the operation zone, the transition zones. We maintain the turning zones in large part. Uh, we retain that inner approach, that fifty-to-one out to seventy-five hundred feet. We maintain the outer, which is a hundred and fifty feet out to the three-mile limit. And with, with the L B one-forty changes, then we resume that fifty-to-one slope out to ten miles. At which point, we're almost eight hundred and ninety feet above the runway end elevation. You can see from the map that most of these zones, five of these zones are primarily over the county. And the county is working on, on similar text amendments now. Uh, the one zone that does, does run over the city is the approach to runway three-two, our crosswind runway. Uh, you can see that that runs, uh, nominally from, from the Haymarket area across downtown. Uh, we are out at, uh, Sheridan Boulevard is nominally over our, the northern edge of that expanded approach. Uh, the Country Club, uh, Brian West would be right in the middle of the approach. Until we get out to those furthest corners, where we're at approximately Seventieth and A at the southeast corner and we're about at Fortieth and Yankee Hill around the Target Store, uh, for that southwest corner. Um, just to give you a sense of how tall a structure could be before we're, before we start to bump up against that approach. Uh, at the, at, uh, Brian West, uh, they could build a structure if they wanted, ever wanted a new tower that was up to three hundred and fifty feet tall. Uh, at the Country Club, they're on a bit of a knob, but they're a little further out, they could be up to four hundred feet tall. Uh, when you get to, get to those outer corners, Seventieth and A, although it's, it's kind of on some high ground, we could be seven hundred and fifty feet tall at that location. Uh, down by Target, in this area that's currently being developed south and west of Fortieth and Yankee Hill, they could be eight hundred and fifty feet tall before they, before they start to press up against this zoning limitation. That in a, in a nutshell, uh, is, is what this text amendment does.
John?
Yeah, for reference purposes, what, refresh us on the height of our state Capitol?
I, the state Capitol's about four hundred feet tall. Um, it is, uh, right in the very edge of this new approach zone. This dot here would be the state Capitol. In fact, if we look at a three-dimensional model of it, the north edge of that approach zone slices right through the Capitol.
So it's in violation, but it's pre-existing?
It's pre-existing, it's grandfathered, we have no intentions of doing anything with our state Capitol.
Any other radio towers or other structures, I guess those might be, or wind, or turbine turbines or something?
The one, the one, a pre-existing structure that's kind of predominant is the K L K N T V Tower at about tenth and Arapahoe. That's about five hundred and sixty-five feet tall and it would penetrate this slope by about a hundred and seventy-five feet. But again, it's a pre-existing structure and we have no intent of, of trying to do anything with that. That has all been, all been factored into approach procedures, uh, and is not an issue for us. Uh, the intent of this is, was really, um, to preclude the construction of new, very tall structures, broadcast towers and wind turbines. Uh, much more of an issue out in the county and certainly not in the predominantly developed area of Lincoln.
Two things we might emphasize is, one, uh, the downtown for the most part is in a special zone, two hundred and seventy-five foot exception. So there's nothing downtown that will be made non-conforming by the exception of the, the, uh, Capitol. Second, uh, for the most part, there is really no change, no significant change within the city with this from what you presently have. The real effect of this change will be with the county zoning, where the instrument approach, uh, runways, uh, are having their approach zone extended to the ten mile. I think that's right, that's it.
If I could just recall, on the downtown, what, what is the height maximum now then, if you've got the downtown somewhat exempted, that somebody could come in and say, and build a new structure?
Two-seventy-five would be the maximum now in the, in the special zone that's been created.
So a twenty-story building, roughly twenty, twenty-five story? Thank you.
Yeah, I was curious about that too, John, and U S Bank Building is, what I read is two hundred and thirty-five feet.
So it's.
So it will be within that. But there was a, a proposal, I don't know, eight, ten years ago, uh, where the Larson Building is now to, for that to be significantly taller, which probably would have been in violation, I'm assuming.
I think that that is just outside of our zoning protections.
Okay.
It's just on the north side.
Um, so, but if there were some developer, say something didn't work out for a hotel developer that wants to put up a fancy gold tower in our town, that, uh, would, would that, um, it would have to be below two hundred and seventy-five feet, is that, that's mandatory, correct?
Unless there was some special exception to the zoning. Uh, which, which we would probably not be fa- in favor of. Uh, as we get taller and taller structures closer to the airport, it has a negative impact on our published approaches, degrades. Degrades that approach, degrades the utility and the investment that's already been made in the airport.
So this, this does potentially have an impact on the Lincoln skyline for the future?
Potentially, but I would suggest that by the time we get to the three-mile limit that already exists, we've already covered most of downtown. Where this expanded protection is really beyond the, the downtown area.
Is that fair, Cindy? Yeah, I think so, and this, this would continue what's in place, and this isn't changing. So, but the effect would have been there before or after this.
Cindy?
So with bringing this in conformance with, did you say L B one-forty, is that right? Okay. Will, do we as a council or as a city have the authority to grant waivers for places like K L K N and different buildings that are already in existence?
There would not, I don't believe there's any need to grant an exception for buildings that are already in existence.
If, if you're wondering, is there the possibility of granting an exception, there, there is. There is, there is an appeal procedure in both the statute and the city ordinance that would allow you to do that. I'm trying to think of what the restrictions are on it right now. Obviously, if it, if it affected an approach zone, we would be here strenuously objecting because the FAA, as John said, would, would find that to be problematic and we have an obligation under our grant assurances to, to seek and obtain and, and assist in enforcing the zoning that affects the, the airport.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Well, I'm sorry to come back on that. Years ago, I remember Lincoln was designated, as I recall, by NASA or whatever, as one of the three alternate spacecraft landing sites for emergency purposes. Are we still in that category or?
At the time, I think we were number eleven, eleven or, eleven or so on that list, without a, without a space shuttle program. There's not much need for that anymore.
Yeah, there's some others that would like to have that, but.
Yes.
Our runway facilities are just incredibly long compared to many airports, as I recall.
Yes, I've heard the air guard call that a national asset more than once.
When I used to land, they kept saying, fly, fly, don't, don't land yet.
Any further questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Okay. Go ahead, Teresa, no further testimony?
We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, item twenty-two, approving Two Loon Ventures LLC doing businesses Thirsty Sports Bar as a Keno satellite at three-seventeen South Eleventh Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Moved by Christensen?
Seconded by Camp, yeah.
Seconded by Camp.
Very good.
And call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Our public hearing ordinance's second reading is just item twenty-three. Ordinance's third reading, approving amendment to the master site lease from the city and the county to the public building commission, amendment to the master lease agreement from the commission to the county and the city, and issuance of the commission's tax-supported lease rental revenue bond series two thousand sixteen, introduced by Lamb. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lamb, seconded by Eskridge. Discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers? He's absent. Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item twenty-five, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter M, by re-establishing the pay range of M fifty-six and assigning class code three-zero-one-seven to the existing battalion chief. Classification for those employees working the fifty-six hour work week, introduced by Lamb. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lamb, seconded by Eskridge. Discussion? Okay, we'll just add that this is an item where, from time to time, departments will reevaluate their structure and make some tweaks. There's no change in pay for any of these battalion chiefs, but there is a, a change in their work schedule to try and provide better operational consistency, better communication on the ground, more supervision and, and collaboration with the firefighters. And we think it'll help with staff morale as well. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item twenty-six. Approving a real estate purchase agreement between the city and C Street LLC for the sale of city-owned property generally located at the southwest corner of Superior Street and Lewis Avenue, introduced by Lamb. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lamb, seconded by Eskridge. Discussion? Carl? Sorry.
Oh, thank you, if you recall, last week during hearing, I asked David Landis, I see he's not here, but I asked him about whether we were paying property taxes on that piece of property and he didn't know, but he did check and get back with me and let me know, yes, indeed, we are. So sale of the property will pass those property taxes on to someone else, so. Just thought, everyone should know that.
Okay, yes.
Go ahead, Carl.
Just, it's, these lots have sat vacant for a long, long time and it's, they're directly across the street from Goodrich Middle School and the, they're a little challenging in how they're developed, but it will be a great opportunity to add some infill residential development to the community.
And in addition to what Cindy and Carl have mentioned, this also will relieve the city of some maintenance and mowing responsibilities, so. Good to see this sale happen. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items twenty-seven through twenty-nine. Ordinances on first reading are items thirty through thirty-five. Our pending list dates certain, items thirty-six and thirty-seven will come off to be on for next week's. Our pending list is item thirty-nine.
And if I might to note that there was a proposed amendment to item thirty-seven that's now online, I believe, so.
Yes, it is.
There'll be public hearing on that next week, so if people are interested. And then with that, Madam Chair, I'd move for adjournment.
Second.
Move, adjournment moved by Camp, seconded by Christensen. Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.